Absolutely. Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Attorney White will be approximately a half hour and forty-five minutes late this evening. And the first up we have is the 2017-2018 budget presentation by our treasurer, Christine Lisack.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you that all of you attended this evening to view this presentation. The 2017-18 fiscal budget for the village of Webster. We'll be talking about sewer fund, the general fund, and the Parks and Recreation Fund, and an update as to where we are at this point in time as far as the funds go with that fund. Budget process began in January. We compared year-to-year actual figures. We looked at the current budget status and where we were and how much we were spending in each line. We looked at what the economic trends are and what things might be going up in price over the coming year. We knew certain items wouldn't change, and we knew that those items would stay the same. We gathered estimates from our department heads, and we had many workshop meetings. The sewer fund, newly established almost a year ago.
Was that Jake? Can I have a picture?
No. The sewer people. Our rate will continue to be ninety-eight dollars as it was this current year. Base rate will be twenty-four fifty for our commercial and resident, our commercial and industrial users. We estimate revenues for the sewer of six-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand dollars. Dump fees to be two-hundred-and-twelve thousand three-and-sixty-four dollars with a total budget appropriation of eight-hundred-and-forty-three thousand three-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars. Estimated revenues for the sewer fund, as I just mentioned, total that will be taken in will be eight-hundred-and-forty-three thousand three-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars. Seventy-five percent of that are sewer charges at six-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand dollars, which are comprised of commercial billing, sewer fees on tax bills, and these commercial billings also include Xerox. STP dump fees are eighteen percent of this budget, which reflects about one-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand dollars, and it also reflects half a cent increase in dump fee charges from three-and-a-half cents to four cents a gallon. Finally, seven percent of the budget is comprised of sewer rents, which are fees charged to developers for connecting to our sewer. More specifically, this is for Brittany Woods connection fees. Sixty-seven units are estimated to be going up there at a cost of nine-hundred dollars per unit to garner sixty-thousand-three-hundred dollars. Our budget appropriations for the coming fiscal year are estimated to be exactly what we take in, hopefully, at eight-hundred-and-forty-three thousand three-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars. Largest portion of that pie is sixty-seven percent for the home and community service section, which are STP operations. Our second section, twelve percent, are employee benefits at twelve percent, which includes medical insurance, among other things, as well as New York State Insurance Fund funding. Thirdly, at eight percent, is debt service. The sewer fund took over the debt for the STP reconstruction at four-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand, the grid system for five-hundred-and-ninety thousand, and the sewer outfall for three-hundred thousand for a total debt to be financed of one-point-three million dollars. This was originally part of the general fund. So this piece comprises sixty-five thousand five-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Thirdly, seven percent for general government support, the village office charges, payroll, administrative charges at fifty-six thousand one-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars, and six percent is for transfers. We anticipate funding reserves for repair and equipment charges, fifty-four thousand one-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars. General fund. As you know, the past, this past year, we, or the current fiscal year, we set aside two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to buy more equipment, and buy we did. This beautiful dump truck is now ours, just paid for us. It didn't come on time, but it's there.
And it's good looking, too.
We also purchased a truck, F-350.
It's a fine looking vehicle.
And a flatbed. And we are leasing a backhoe, which was very useful after the windstorm, right? So the general fund.
Backhoe, Jake? What's that?
Is that in the backhoe?
Yeah.
The general fund for this 2017-18 budget, our tax rate will stay the same at two dollars and thirteen cents a thousand. Estimated revenues are anticipated to be two million six-hundred-and-fourteen thousand nine-hundred-and-thirteen dollars. We do not anticipate appropriating any fund balance to cover any shortfalls, because there will be no shortfalls. So therefore, budget appropriations will be the same as revenues at two million six-hundred-and-fourteen thousand nine-hundred-and-thirteen dollars. Estimated revenues are comprised as follows. Largest piece of our pie comes from county sales tax, anticipated income to be one million three-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand dollars. Our second piece is property taxes at five-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand one-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars, which is twenty-one percent of our pie. Other charges, other taxes, village fees and income at three-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand seven-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars, which includes cable TV franchise fees, gross utility taxes, passport fees, building permits, and mortgage taxes, among other things, of course. State sources comprise ten percent of the budget, two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand one-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars. Cell tower income is seventy-five thousand eight-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars at three percent, and payments and more taxes at sixty thousand eight-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand dollars. Our budget appropriations, the largest piece of this pie is transportation or DPW at a million dollars, one million five-hundred-and-five thousand five-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars, thirty-nine percent of the pie. Second piece is employee benefits, which include New York State retirement funding, as well as medical insurance. Thirdly, government, the general governmental support at four-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand dollars, which includes the office, upkeep of the office, trustee payroll, insurances, workers' camp umbrella coverage, and the attorney's fees. Home and community services include zoning plans, storing water expenses, one-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand dollars. Interfund transfers come in at one-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand eight-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars, five percent of our pie, which include funding of reserves, of which we plan on funding six. For every connector project, ten thousand eight-hundred dollars, equipment rotation at fifty thousand. New York State Retirement, Donovan Street, Commercial Street revitalization, ten thousand apiece at this time. And we have established a well decommissioning reserve fund for forty-eight thousand fifty-six dollars. Debt service is at one-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand eight-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars. Funding of the street sweeper and milling and paving of some streets that we did several years ago. And public safety comes in at fifty-six thousand dollars, and cultural recreational activities at thirty-two thousand dollars. Projects that the DPW plans on working on this year include stuning and cornering paving, preventive road maintenance, rotating road service maintenance, which will lower future maintenance costs. And we continue to fund the equipment replacement program and hope to purchase another dump truck, a flatbed, and a pickup truck. Finally, our Parks and Recreation Trust Fund. As you know, this is new construction, which was approved after April 26, 2007. One thousand dollars per unit is paid by the developer for this fee, once the C have always been issued. To date, we've collected one-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand eight-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars in fees, one-hundred-and-eighty dollars in interest, and we've spent sixty-four thousand one-hundred-and-forty-five dollars. Currently, the park and rec account balance is fifty-nine thousand eight-hundred-and-sixty dollars. There's no budget necessary for this fund, and it can be used to purchase equipment and land for the parks. And that's all I have to present this evening. Does anyone have any questions?
Well done.
Thank you.
Just had a question on the cable TV franchise. You're showing a jump from forty-five to sixty-five. Could you just provide some details on that, please?
Certainly. In the 2016 fiscal year, we collected sixty-five thousand dollars, and in the current fiscal year, we've already collected fifty thousand dollars, and we anticipate receiving another payment in May. So that will most likely, because each payment is typically sixteen thousand dollars, it'll bring us well over sixty-five thousand for the current year. So I budgeted forward about the same amount that we've received in the past.
Okay. Vehicles.
Vehicles.
This is to you, sir Jake.
Yes, sir.
So after we buy these three vehicles, what are we looking at for next year?
I know at some point the backhoe is going to have to get into the mix for replacement vehicle or replacement plan for that or lease option on that.
That'd be the sewer, though, right?
Yes, yeah. That would be the sewer, but that's, you know, one of them. It's going to effectively replace all of our, our two pickup trucks and two flatbeds. And then we have, we're going to have one more dump truck that's going to have to leave in the rotation. And what we're thinking about ultimately having is two six-wheelers, you know, full-size six-wheelers and two of the smaller ones, like we got the 750 like we got this year. It was really, we got it the day before the windstorm, and so we were able to use it with that snowstorm, and it performed great. The guys were real happy with it and did everything the bigger truck could do, but it ran obviously less expensively, so it was forty grand cheaper, so. That's, that's the plan right now, is we're working on those dump trucks and sidewalk pile, and that's, that's a biggie. Obviously, that piece of equipment, when we're testing different things now, I think we found a pretty decent one that's running.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's a little wide. It's four foot wide, it's a mini articulating loader, a whacker with a snow blower on the front. They took it down last week to where you have snow stock piled from all the snow on Main Street, and it kind of melted and went through, so it was pretty hard packed, and said the thing was throwing snow a hundred feet.
Really?
Now we can put it in the backyard, it's now.
Nice.
Great.
It's already back in the state truck, that truck go by, right?
But it really performed well. It's one that we went over and saw it on around the corner, there's three of them. We saw over at around the corner. They have three of those and some tracklesses.
Nice.
And they're just a little more than half the boss of the trackless.
Really?
Yeah. So, yeah.
Well, I tell you what, it's nice to see a new vehicle then, and it's nice to know that there'll be more coming in next year, so.
Hopefully that's.
Sorely needed. What's that?
Hopefully it work goes a little smoother than the last one.
Well, yeah, that was a, it was a learning, learning lesson, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
I think everybody learned a little bit on that, but it's nice to see it and the timing that it did arrive, albeit late. Couldn't have been better, like you said. Put it right to use. I just want to thank everybody, board members included, for all the hard work that went into putting this budget together. I mean, a lot of, a lot of great questions were asked. I mean, there may be a couple more tweaks here and there, but it's nice to see that we're able to keep the tax rate at its current level, which is nine, nine cents lower than it had been for years. And, you know, I'm happy that we established a number of reserve accounts that will be available to continue to fund going forward. So, you know, I'm quite pleased with all the work that everyone has done, and I really appreciate it. Thank everyone for all their diligence and efforts in this, putting this together. Christina, thank you very much for your, your presentation this evening also.
Sure.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay, well, it is now approximately seven forty-four, so we have one more minute, and we will open up the public hearing, but we have to wait till seven forty-five, so. Mark, mark yourself, so we can play.
You're so cute.
All right, I have seven forty-five, so at this time I will open up the public hearing and the budget. Anyone who would like to speak, please step forward.
Richard, Waller, 20 Elm Street. I just want to make one major, or two major points in the budget. One is the wage increase that you've all rolled in yourselves. As we are a village now with only two major sections, DPW and sewer, where before we were a village with three major sections, including a water department, your responsibilities went down tremendously three and a half years ago when you did away, or a little over three and a half years ago when you did away with the water department. I don't feel that a three percent raise, and at this time justified, as you are now doing a lot less, have less responsibilities. The water department was a responsibility for the health, well-being of all the people in the village of Webster. One major follow-up could have made a lot of people sick, and that's now gone. You no longer have that responsibility. And also, I'd like to say, along with the person that put an article on today's Herald, people in the village here are earning a money of fixed income and got three tenths of a percent. You're asking for three percent. I realize that three percent is not a lot of money, but the general principle of the matter is you want to be rewarded for last year raising us our tax, not our taxes, but a sewer fee, which amounted to, some people, well over forty percent increase in the bill they get from the village every year. And for billing people forty percent more, I don't think that justifies a raise. If anything, you should be ashamed of yourself for asking for that once in one year, and take a cut and pay. Thank you.
What you neglected to state is how we've declined it all four years of being on the, or three years previous to this on the board.
I still have.
And that in 2005, which is twelve years ago.
Yep.
They were making more than we do since this board today. So I just want the record to reflect the missing fact.
Declining that still puts it on the books and leaves it there, so the next person to take the seat, instead of getting a three percent raise, now steps in at a three, six, nine, twelve percent raise as it multiplies over the years. If we keep putting raises in that we don't take, all of a sudden, somebody's stepping into the job at a much higher raise rate than the last person.
So I do, I respect, I respect your opinion, but I also like the record standard. This board has also declined it several years in a row, so that's an important factor you should know. I just want to piggyback on that. I addressed this last year also, Jerry. Thank you for your comments. Mr. Walters, thank you for your comments also. That if you base just on the rate of inflation, salaries for the trustees and the mayor, the mayor's salary would be eighteen thousand, and obviously, the rate of inflation has been less than three percent for a number of years.
According to the Social Security Administration, it was three tenths of a percent.
I'm speaking, Mr. Walters, thank you very much. And, and I also commend this board on, on the due diligence of establishing a sewage rental fee, in my opinion, which should have been established decades ago. And by establishing this sewage rental fee, which I believe is the lowest sewage rental fee in Monroe County, it has afforded the village of Webster to implement a vehicle rotation plan, establish numerous reserve accounts that were in need of, of being established for a number of years. I think that we put the village on a fiscal path of responsible budgeting, and I think this board is to be commended for that. And one, one additional thing that doesn't get a lot of notoriety is the fact that this village board actually lowered the tax rate from two dollars and twenty-two cents to two dollars and thirteen cents. It was, it was with, you know, with difficulty that we did that. We didn't take that lightly, that decision to implement the sewage rental fee, but it was something that needed to be done, and I think that we put this village in the right direction physically as a result of that, so. Thank you for your comments, appreciate it. Anyone else? There's no one else, it seems, to speak during the public hearing. I will close the public hearing at this point, and we'll move into comments. So anyone who'd like to speak?
It's me again.
Good evening. How are you?
I want to refer to the article, front page article that Mr. Cahill put in the paper, has your byline, so I assume you wrote this, and it does sound like, pretty much like somebody else, about the budget. First of all, first thing I highlighted here was it says significant open meetings. All the budget meetings that I was here for were in executive, or not executive session, were in a workshop, which although they're open for the public to sit here, they're not open for the public to comment in. So significant open meetings, I don't know where they were. They were not open to the public for comment, only the public to sit and listen to. If that could just establish some new reserve accounts here for Donovan Street, Commercial Street, that's good, but I don't think we can wait until they're fully funded, because we'll be back to dirt roads time you, at the rates you're putting money, where there's enough money there to rebuild the streets that they need. So I would hope that we find some other way to fund them before we wait another five, six years at the rates you're funding them now to complete. And the major point in here is a well-capping reserve fund. When the water was switched, we were indicated it would not cost anything to switch. Well, I guess it didn't cost anything to switch, because the county turned the valves. Now we're just putting, I think you quoted tonight, the treasurer quoted tonight, forty-eight thousand dollars away to do this. At that rate, just the closing down of the wells, their estimates, and that's only the wells at the well field, not the ones that are offsite. The last estimate I heard was about seven-hundred thousand dollars, which does not include the removal of asbestos from the buildings up there. So at the rates you're funding it now, fifteen, twenty years with inflation, we might finish paying off the cost of switching the water. And again, the lowering of the tax rate down from two-twenty-two to two-thirteen, I will come right back to the same thing. As I just said before, you did lower the tax rate, a miniscule lowering of the rate and a major increase with the sewer. The net effect is many people, including myself, are paying well over forty percent more to the village. Whether you call it a fee or a tax, it still comes out of our pockets. So fee or tax are the same. And again, as you are doing more, the last line of your article in the paper says you're doing more with less. Well, if you take that forty-eight dollar, or that ninety-eight dollar fee, that over forty percent increase, I would say you're doing, maybe doing more, but you've got a lot more to do it with, and it all came out of village taxpayers' pockets. Thank you.
Yeah, just to clarify, the last sentence, I was referring to the state funding, but we haven't seen significant increases in that, so that's what that state was referring to. Thank you, Mr. Walters, appreciate it. Anyone else this evening? No? Okay. I'll close down the public comment section, we'll move right into board business. Okay, first up is minutes. So first one up is village board workshop for the March 22, 2017. This was obviously a budget meeting.
Village Board Business, the village board reviewed the preliminary budget, made changes and suggestions to different budget lines. Penalty preliminary budget will be updated and presented to the village board at the meeting on March 23, 2017.
Quite a review, by the way.
That was it. That was it. Could mention all were present with the exception of trustee Alito. However.
I would have rather been here than when I went through that tape.
Yes, yes, yes.
That was the worst. All right, I will entertain the motion in a second to accept the minutes as to that.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Lancy.
Aye.
Trustee Velpain.
Aye.
Trustee Byers.
Aye.
Trustee Alito.
I'm not saying no. Say yes. All right.
Mayor Cahill.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, next is the meeting minutes for March 23 meeting. One addition I would like to see included in these minutes were, that were left out, were the comments that trustee Byers made with respect to the flyer from the Webster Citizens Action League, and then my response to trustee Byers' comments regarding that flyer. I'd like to see those included in the minutes. That's the only input I had regarding these minutes. Do you have any issues with anything else? I did review the tape, and it was a, I felt it was a significant discussion, and I'd like to include it in the minutes. Anybody else have anything? All right, I'll entertain the motion in a second to accept these minutes with the provision that the comments made by trustee Byers and myself on the tape are included in the minutes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Velpain.
Aye.
Trustee Alito.
Aye.
Trustee Byers.
Aye.
Trustee Lancy.
Aye.
Mayor Cahill.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, next we have the village board workshop of March 28. Trustee Byers, would you just stay on it, please?
Hey, we opened this up at seven o'clock, and absent were, oh, trustee Alito, trustee Motion by trustee Byers, seconded by trustee Lancy, to enter into executive session at seven-eleven to discuss the CSEA union contract negotiations with Jennifer Reese, CSEA labor relations specialist John Carnaval, chief waste treatment plant operator Jane Scott, senior motor equipment operator Jake Swingley, superintendent public works all were in favor, and Carrie. Motion by trustee Lancy, seconded by trustee Byers, to exit executive session at eleven oh one P M. Sorry, you guys missed that.
We have, we have.
All were in favor of Carrie.
Thank you.
Fine, fine review, sir. Thank you.
Just got one correction. That was Dan Mordell.
Yeah, it was Dan.
That's Jane Scott.
Yeah.
They're frequently confused.
I propose to Jane Scott.
Yeah.
All right, so is that the end of the question?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, so I entertain the motion in a second to accept the minutes with the adjustment, which Joe Zada has made notation to.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
I was talking to her when you guys made your motion in a second.
I second.
Who did first? Trustee Lancy.
Aye.
Trustee Byers.
Aye.
Trustee Alito.
Aye.
Trustee Velpain.
They were here.
Mayor Cahill.
Saying no.
As long as you review it, I'll take a second.
How'd you call Mayor Cahill?
I didn't hear you just call my name, sorry. Yes. Yes.
Motion passes.
I just called Dan Mordle's last name incorrectly.
D O R.
I can't remember, it's L E or E L. I think it's...
L E.
L E.
T L E. What country are you from?
Our country...
Bojolai.
America. Right? I remember.
D O R.
L E's.
L E. T L E.
Yeah.
Did you want...
All right, moving along, we have a resolution to approve the claims and warrants. I reviewed the bills. I've had my questions answered.
Did you ask about the tolling?
Yep.
Okay. What was that for?
The first it was, ended up being a transmission. What was it again, Jake?
It was on W seven, our older, oldest dump drop was an intermittent transmission issue. It's got a push button automatic transmission. But that, when it went to dump at High Acres, it would not dump. That was the one, if you recall, the box came off of.
Hence vehicle rotation.
Yes. We got the box back on relatively quick, and on, and it was tested. When it went down, we don't know if there was, after that, there was air in the liner, I think it was an adjustment on the hydraulic motor, or the hydraulic pump for it was unnecessary. But it wouldn't dump when it was full. We took it down there on the way, almost to Lakeville, it is when it started, the transmission issues reared their head again. So, we got to Lakeville, ended up having to add a tow, up back up to take care of the transmission issues, and then they were just word away, and we got the material dumped and everything, so.
Any other questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion a second to pay the bills then.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Belkane.
Aye.
Trustee Byers.
Aye.
Trustee Alito.
Aye.
Trustee Lancy.
Aye.
Mayor Cahill.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, next is authorization for Jake Swinley and Jim Lancy to attend the two thousand and seventeen Highway School, sponsored by the Cornell Local Roads Program and Ithaca. And it's at a cost not to exceed nine hundred and sixty-four dollars. Jake, I know that you sent out the email descriptions earlier, requests of questions or whatever. We give everyone another opportunity to ask questions at this time if they haven't.
And to clarify too, I think at this point, I'm going to withdraw the request for myself to go to this, you know, looking at the budget and thinking about what we have for some of these opportunities. Nikon usually has very good information as well, and that's usually in October. So, I thought if Jim could go to this one, I would look at going to the Nikon one in October.
Where is the one in October?
Hawaii.
I was just going to say. Saratoga.
No, I think this year, I think it's in Lake George this year.
Yeah, Saratoga, Lake George.
Yeah, somewhere in that area. Last year we went, it was in Geneva, which is really nice, because, oh, nice and not nice, you have to drive back and forth every day, but it was nice because we didn't have to stay and have that expense, so. But, you know...
So, that takes the cost down to what has to be...
Four fifty or something?
Yes.
Yeah, with the hotel and the...
Forty.
It's a hundred and ten for the...
Class. One twenty-four for each night. Time three.
Yes, it was, that's forty-two for the class and hotel, and there's typically, you know, some other travel and incidental things and meals and stuff included in there. So, I would say we could for a cost not to exceed seven fifty, provide us what we need. I think it's going to be way high, but I don't want to come back for twenty-five dollars at the end of it. I think typically the per diem stuff, you know, some of the meals are provided during the class, the lunch meal is, usually the evening is not. And I think that per diem rate on, I think it's typically fifty, about fifty-five bucks a day for the whole place, I think meals are about thirty, I think they figure thirty or thirty-five of that.
What are you looking at?
It's just under five hundred total, and so maybe not to exceed seven hundred dollars should give us a good, good, good number on that.
You said around five hundred, or not to exceed seven?
It was five for just the class and the hotel alone. So, with the other incidentals, there's three days of the, three days of dinner, which should be about another hundred and twenty.
She's taking the Equinox?
Hopefully, one part of the vehicle rotation plan, if you recall too, is give her that little S-ten pickup, steel wheels, the one, the building department's pickup for him, and then put Will in that Equinox. So, if we can do away without the Equinox for a few days with Will to drive the truck, that would be great. Get down to that point where he's not, you know, plus with the bell, or anybody else using it, that's, that's the plan. He would like to have an electric vehicle, which I'm sure will be working towards at some point.
Would it any cost staying outside of Ithaca?
Yeah, there's, there's a...
Hotel?
What's that?
At a hotel or outside of Ithaca, driving in, if he's got the Equinox?
We've done that, I, my first year I went down to that, I stayed up...
You did that for...
Yeah, near the airport, and it was, I think it was still a little more, I think it was like the hundred and twenty-four, I believe, in the hotel, which is pretty, pretty inexpensive. My grand scheme of things nowadays, I guess, but I stayed in one right near the airport, and it was, I think it was bad.
All right. She got it here, your daughter?
So...
You gotta go? No, please, she's okay. That's what I was making sure. Sorry about that. Yeah. Where are we?
I'll take the motion. We're not in ready to have the motion for seven hundred dollars, maximum not to exceed.
Okay.
So, that's for motion, to send Jim Lancy to the Highway School for a cost not to exceed seven hundred dollars.
I'll second it.
Trustee Byers.
Aye.
Mayor Cahill.
Aye.
Trustee Alito.
Aye.
Trustee Belkane.
Aye.
Trustee Lancy.
Aye.
Item number four is a resolution to pay Blue Engineers the invoice of two thousand two hundred and sixty dollars for professional services rendered in February for the Norvad Insect Project, paid out in Norvad Insect Project Reserve account. Yep, I'll make it.
I'll second it.
Trustee Alito.
Aye.
Trustee Lancy.
Aye.
Trustee Belkane.
Aye.
Trustee Byers.
Aye.
Mayor Cahill.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Along the lines... Just going ahead.
Along those same lines here with Blue Engineers, do we have a date?
Yeah.
They set up a date for...
I've not set up, we have not set up a date for the meeting. I responded to, there was a discussion about this last week in April, and I was trying to get it earlier, and I believe he was out of town, because I had to go out to get to talk to him, or I have not gotten to talk to him yet, so I'm going to try to reach out again and make sure I get that set up. My expectation, what he sent out originally was that week of, that next week or following week.
The last week of last?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and I was trying to make it before that, keep things, or keep them in watch.
All right, next we have authorization for Verizon to provide cell phone service to the Village Webster.
All of Jo's emails, I thought she really wanted to go with AT&amp;T.
Jeez, I got, I didn't get that...
Now, wait a second.
I didn't get that impression.
She told me to say.
Well, I, I appreciate the research that she did on this, and, you know, I think the numbers speak for themselves, along with the fact that the AT&amp;T rep still hasn't even contacted her, so that goes along the lines of, you know, customer, customer service and the research. Unless anyone has any objections, I would entertain a motion a second to authorize Verizon through Deputy Clerk Joe O'Neill to provide our cell phone services to us coming forward.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
I just got a quick question on this, and I don't think I've seen this portion before, but is this unlimited, like messages and data usage, I thought?
That was one of the questions we did ask.
It's tiered as far as minutes.
Yeah, you can use, if you're over and someone isn't.
It's a shared pool.
Yeah, it's a shared pool.
Of minutes. And we might have a problem the first month or two until we start to, you know, build that pool of minutes, but it, from what it looks like, each phone gets two hundred minutes, so you'll be getting a thousand minutes. But remember, everyone, most people have Verizon anyways. When you authorize a person, it's free. It doesn't take...
Right, right. I think sometimes it's, it's a data, and I, I'm, I know with, you know, getting emails and stuff like that, especially if you're not in a Wi-Fi area.
And that was a big concern for Jo too, and she, I'm confident that she's gained the best...
Yeah, and this is over, she had them to support what you, on average, were doing, and this was over that.
Yeah.
So, I think you should be...
She went, she utilized past usage.
My, my son just got an iPhone not that long ago, and we got two notices from one month from AT&amp;T saying, hey, your data's over, and we're going to charge another fifteen bucks for another gig, and then about a week later, hey, your data's getting close again, and you're going to get another fifteen bucks for another gig.
It went, it rolled into week number two? I'm surprised, Jake.
I think it was about a week and a half, and he blamed that on the power outage.
Did he, right?
Yeah.
Because he was, he was wrong or something like that?
No, he didn't have any Wi-Fi.
Yeah.
Just telling him wipe down the berries.
I told him that we have books that don't require Wi-Fi. Oh, no.
It didn't work, did it?
No. The old hand over the phone, it worked.
So, I made...
I tried it.
Trustee Alito.
Trustee Lancy.
Trustee Lancy. Trustee Belkane.
Aye.
Trustee Byers.
Aye.
Mayor Cahill.
Aye. Okay, next is the Arbor Day Foundation. So, I'd like to read the letter that we received. And it says, Dear Tree City USA Supporter, on behalf of the Arbor Day Foundation, a right to congratulate the Village Webster on earning recognition as a two thousand and sixteen Tree City USA. Residents of the Village Webster should be proud to live in a community that makes the planting and care of trees a priority. Village Webster is one of more than thirty-four hundred Tree City USAs with a combined population of one hundred and forty million. The Tree USA program is sponsored by the Arbor Day Foundation in partnership with the U.S. Forest Service and the National Association of State Foresters. As a result of your commitment to effective urban forest management, you already know that trees are vital to the public infrastructure of cities and towns throughout the country, providing numerous environmental, social, and economic benefits. In fact, trees are one piece of the community infrastructure that actually increases in value over time. We hope you are excited to share this accomplishment. In closing, this packet is a press release for your convenience as you prepare to contact local media and the public. State foresters are responsible for the presentation of the Tree City USA flag and other materials. We will forward information about your awards to your state's foresters' office to coordinate presentation. It would be especially appropriate to make the Tree USA award a part of your community's Arbor Day ceremony. Again, we celebrate your commitment to the people and trees of the Village Webster, and thank you for helping to create a healthier planet for all of us. And to this end, and in recognition of all the work and effort and background research in bringing this to the board's attention, instead of setting up the Arbor Day planting of the trees out front, the planting of all seventeen trees throughout the village last summer, I would like to give special recognition to our superintendent of the DPW, Mr. Jake Swinley, because without his efforts, this would not have happened. So, Jake, this is just one more thing that, you know, I'm proud to say thank you for your efforts on this, and again, without, without your efforts, this would not have happened. So, I greatly, greatly appreciate what you have done for the Village Webster with respect to Arbor Day and the recognition that we, we have received, because if it wasn't for you, we would not have received that, so, thank you.
And, and I think, you know, goes back to the board too, and their commitment when you're reviewing the budget, it's very easy to know, there's not a lot of visual gain from spending thousands of dollars every year and improving that for, for tree trimming and things like that, but that windstorm that we had really highlighted the value that we lost two of our village trees, and we certainly had a lot of other ones to pick up, but only two trees and all that, because the board continues to make commitments to spending that money and providing that, that funding and tree trimming, and the, the inventory had been just updated and things like that, so there's certainly a lot more than me, and all the guys in back that, that want to pick up the brush and help promote, you know, everybody in the village having trees on their own personal property too, because there's nowhere to get rid of the brush, nowhere to get rid of the leaves, nowhere to, you know, it's, it's very tempting just to make one cut at the bottom of them, so.
Thank you for your trip. Welcome as well.
Yes.
That was good.
Left at, what, three, four o'clock in the morning?
Well...
Four, four thirty. Thank you very much.
Appreciate you, David.
All right, next is a resolution for Mayor Cahill to sign the Verizon Wireless Document regarding the ten seventy-five South Avenue. This is regarding the cell tower. Any questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion a second to authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Byers.
Aye.
Trustee Lancy.
Aye.
Trustee Alito.
Aye.
Mayor Cahill.
Aye.
Motion passed.
As soon as we're done here, Jo, that I'll sign that, and you can just go right to it. Next up is our attorney, who is not present, so we will move along to the overtime report.
Can we get it over, Jake?
Yeah. And if there's any questions, obviously this month, or this...
Including the windstorm.
Yeah, including, yeah, including the wind and the storm, yeah. I mean, and these, I can't say enough about the guys that, you know, working in the back, and some of the hours that they put in, I mean, everybody's like, oh, yeah, you're going to know this overtime, it's still reported, twenty hours sometimes over here.
Yeah.
Trying to keep up with people already saying...
I don't even think it's that crazy with the amount of issues.
Yeah.
It's not like they were sitting in the bathroom eating pizza, you know.
I got a pizza a couple nights. Oh, absolutely. No, they absolutely, but they, yeah, they were, it's, Kevin, Kevin came up to this shift down at the sewer treatment plant and then coming up, came up here and pushed the weight stuff around, it was here for quite a while and covering, so.
It was exciting, we were on the sidewalk while they're, the trackless area.
Yeah, I got called in Florida for, hey, can you get back, can you come right in? Amazing.
I tell you, it was, it was, once again, it was a heck of a team effort and, you know, I've said it before, I'll continue to say it and I brag about it all the time, you know, we got a heck of a team of guys here, we really do. And I've said it and I'll continue to say, I'll put them up against any municipality out there. So, you know, I think we're very, very fortunate, the village is very fortunate they have, you know, as many, you know, hardworking, committed people that we have in our, in our system, so. Thanks, thanks for all, all the gentlemen, for all their hard work and commitment for, you know, during that snowstorm and the windstorm also. And the residents greatly appreciated the fact that not only did we pick up the branches, you know, we went out with the loader and we picked up the, you know, the cut off logs and stuff, which obviously we don't do on a regular basis, but in this situation we did and I'm just, you know, even people on my street were very appreciative of the fact that we did that. And they know it's not a normal course of business for us to do that, but the special circumstances, the village stepped up to help our residents and it did not go unnoticed, let's just put it that way. So next we have budget modifications.
Of which there are two, the first of which is for $3,750. Currently, the equipment line, this amount would be too small of an amount to go into the equipment line, so it's coming from the equipment line and going to pump station maintenance. For some reason, CPE didn't bill properly, so we just received late 2016, a bill for 2015. Yes, there was a bill set up for it, I'm not gonna call a vendor and ask for a bill.
Yeah.
And I didn't, but they didn't forget about it till two years later. So consequently, the money was put back into fund balance because they just didn't think that anything was gonna happen of it. Well, consequently, it is a general fund expense, so therefore, $3,750 is going from the sewer equipment line in the general fund to the pump station maintenance line in the general fund. And the second one is for $5,361. Currently, the sewer treatment equipment line has that money to be transferred into the sanitary sewer system equipment line to allow for the purchase of a sewer lateral line camera, which has already been purchased.
Yeah, that was a replacement, this one, I think went out about 83 feet, I believe.
This one goes up to what, 200? I was looking at the bill.
That wasn't the problem, it broke the fiber optic. Twisted.
No, I'm talking about the length that goes down, it's like 200 feet when I read on that invoice.
It was about the same as I brought to your house.
That's, is that 200 feet?
We didn't take it all the way out.
Yeah, how did it break? How the fiber optics break?
When you push it, it sometimes hits curls and 45s and just time and time bending and bending and bending and.
Yeah, I was, I was surprised how expensive that stuff is. I looked at all the other expenses on there related to the camera, I'm like, holy smokes.
But in return, you save the village taxpayers a lot of money by not having them take private companies and camera the same line for $300 a pump.
Listen, I'm not criticizing, I'm just saying that I was amazed at how expensive that stuff is. You know, the camera service is phenomenal, I've used it at least twice as I know of. It works fantastic. And then, and you're right, you save the village taxpayers a lot of money, because if they were to hire a private company, it's a great point to make, it'd be extremely expensive to have them go down there. So that's just another service that, you know, people don't realize that we provide until the time comes where the sewer line's back up and they need to know why. And then you can call Chamberlain and they'll come down and they'll clean it out or even rent a great big snake like I did on a couple of occasions and run that down. Alright, any other questions?
Is that, that one was covered here? And the, built the 5,361. I saw it on the line here.
Yes, that's exactly.
From Cook Iron or whatever. So we proved that.
And by the way, with that purchase, did you get a hair?
How about gloves?
Oh, gloves, just.
I would take the gloves.
Alright, so I'll make a motion and a second, entertain a motion a second to make these budget modifications as delineated by our charter.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Trusty Belkane.
Aye.
Trusty Lancy.
Aye.
Trusty Abalito.
Aye.
Trusty Byer.
Aye.
Mayor Cahill.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Oh, yeah.
Jake, do you have nothing for this evening?
Just a couple of quick things.
It's kind of a meeting question.
I did hear back from the town of Shelby regards to the offer that the village made for their 2016 Mack dump truck. As you recall, we were looking at that, so we went out and viewed the truck, made an offer of 140,000, which was rejected unfortunately by the town, they said they, you know, they couldn't lose that much. I did have the opportunity to talk to the supervisor today, during his time, they called me back, they called me up and I think, I think we're looking in another direction. I think what they, their appetite, there seems to be some contention about this truck in the giggo. And I think that, at least from what I got in that regard was, you know, they're aiming at 170 or above. And I think at that, at that cost, which I believe I understand from their standpoint, but at that cost, we might as well look at one that's already the right color. So I don't think there's the opportunity for savings there, like if we had.
It's good effort though.
Yeah, no, it's a beautiful.
Don't make a pass, you don't get the sale, as they say, so.
Beautiful, beautiful truck and I think it would have worked well with slight modifications, but I think at that time, at that point, I'm assuming, I certainly couldn't speak for the board, but I'm assuming that it would be.
I concur.
If I replied that the 170,000 would not be unacceptable.
Alright, okay. Great.
And then, also just Monday, we met last week with the contractor that was doing the sidewalks on Kittleberger Park. And Monday, maybe you recall this, Community Development Block Grant, the largest ever that the village received. I gotta throw that in for Will. But we met with the contractor, they were hoping to get that in last fall, but we didn't get the contract until, in November. That was on the board starting Monday. So they should be, oh, we sent notifications and neighbors and things like that and met down there and marketed things out. So we're going, the south side of the road has sidewalks whole length, we're going five footers. We're extending about 25 foot pass on both sides and creating a crosswalk down there, kind of close to where the circle is. And then, if we can, we've been talking to the Community Development Block Grant folks with the county, if they can find any additional funding, like before Monday, we're gonna be looking at in that side, this, the north side of the road, there's a short section about 270 feet. Probably looking at in that as well, making those five footers. You know, Morgan does what he's doing down at the other end.
You get put back in too, right?
Perhaps someday we could look at, put them all together. They might work really good there, I know there's a few spots there with some, a couple houses in particular with some water issues, water running down their driveways into their backyard, into their front yard, the curbs missing in one spot. And they said when they was, those houses, their houses were from the 1800s. They used to come out into a step and then have another step and then that would go down to the road. Well, now the road is much higher than the first step where they come out. So over time, they must have just kept, whenever they repaid, they forgot the milling part in front of it or the removal, so. It seems like the road is about 18 inches from this description, about 18 inches higher than it was when the house was built, so. If we can look at doing sidewalks in that part, it might provide a nice little dual purpose, you know, nice safe trail and a nice dam across the end of it to carry everything the other way, so.
What's, what's involved in that? I mean, do we provide any vehicles or equipment?
Sidewalk replacement? No, we're doing a remove, replace, and they're doing the restoration. I mean, they're doing everything, it's remove, replace, and restore.
Okay, so we don't do, we don't like, we don't provide anything?
No, we will, if there's things, because there are always things that will hop up, so we'll be available.
Okay.
You know, there's one area where we're gonna put drainage in, we'll work with them and get drainage in from before we put the new crosswalk in.
Right.
Because there's a wet spot down the end that could over, if we don't put that drainage, we're gonna put a French drain and bring it over to where that creek is. If we don't have that in there, it's just gonna create a dam and I think make that situation worse. So we'll work with them on that. If there's issues with the driveways, we have a pretty narrow tree lawn area and the aprons are pretty narrow. We're trying to just keep it to whatever's kind of included into the price. But it gets to where we start pulling up some asphalt and more of it's popping up where it's obvious that that's the best way to do it. Maybe we're gonna end up with flopping and grabbing some of those driveway aprons so we don't, we can limit costs to, or limit any overages. But, yeah, they, they plan on taking about three days, they said, three and a half days and they'll start pulling on one end and just keep rolling down. They're pouring one day, still pulling further ahead and forming them and keep moving. They did Baker Street, or a couple of years ago. And that's it.
The Nassau area, it's amazing, the progress that the board is making and the building's done. I mean, the foundations are all in, he's already started in the back, they all shake building and the progress is phenomenal. It really, really is, very impressive, very impressive to see that, so. I think the winter, obviously, the mild winter we have aided in that. And I think you made the comment that it was amazing that none of the, maybe it was you or Ju made the comment that during the windstorm, none of those frames, none of the frames fell over.
That should be the best advertisement.
Right.
Solid buildings, solid living here.
There's certainly a lot exposed there.
Absolutely.
So, yeah, I'm kind of excited to see that. I wish we saw the timing of that in the North Avenue project. Pretty, pretty big deal for.
And one more thing to just follow.
I'll check up.
I didn't mention the windstorm and cleanup, that's continuing. We had a normal brush pickup last week, so we had that normal effort plus whatever people are putting out. We're still, next week, we're gonna finish up and then go back. And anything that's not out, you know, we'll try to, try to work with, oh, I guess we're off tomorrow. So Monday morning, I'm gonna put it on the website, I'll work with Bill and try to get it on the website.
What's that?
This is the last week for the storm cleanup.
Did they get Judson Street D N L today?
I think they've gone around about three times and they're still, there's a pile out there now that's about as big as the picture behind you on Lincolnshire, but they've been around about three times and I think it's natural, people see them going by, you know, they're getting outside, right after it happened, we had a couple feet of snow. Especially if they've gotta get in the backyard or do something.
Real wet.
So many of them are so wet, you know, the yards and everything are so wet and if they're just drying out now, maybe we can just get something back there, even a wheelbarrow sometimes will sink in and just tear things up, so it might be.
Yeah, especially not using the, are we using the hard tire, higher tires than the wheelbarrows?
Yeah, so I think that people are getting stuff out there and the guys are, it's, some of those piles are something. We've been using our backhoe, sometimes it's a haul it, but.
Okay, just go on, thanks.
That's it.
Brilliant, for sure this time.
Why, thank you. So we still don't have.
So are we going to?
I thought this was a thumb grab, I pulled it out because it started acting wacky and I thought it was their power point presentation, maybe too much. It's actually the controller for the mouse.
The mouse stopped working.
Mouse stopped working, I thought it worked, so.
Oh, boy. Okay, your headache's getting to you, good guy.
It is.
So are we gonna, are we going to, going executive session tonight?
I have nothing, if it was in regards to the union negotiations, I have nothing back yet.
Well, we had the thing you emailed to everybody, do you want to review that?
I don't think there was any.
TA?
Oh, we certainly can.
That's what I thought this was for on here.
Yeah, I think I've lots of that there to read. I don't know, I thought that's what we would talk about.
Did you guys review that or no?
He sent it this week, you're the one who sent it this week.
Oh, he sent it this week.
Yeah.
I did? Oh, yeah. Yes, or she probably did. Yeah, grabbed it.
Alright. Is that a yes or a no?
Yeah, we certainly could, I can get this off my notes.
Well, are you prepared or no? We can wait till the next meeting.
I did not review this.
And then let's wait.
That might be.
Then let's wait.
Yeah, because I know we met with the.
Paycheck?
Paycheck yet? Okay, yeah, that's not even there, because I was waiting to incorporate paycheck stuff in with what we already had, so. I actually forgot I even sent this out. We met with them, so yes. We have a number of paychecks, so.
Alright, I'll entertain a motion a second to close the meeting at this time?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trusty Belkane.
Aye.
Trusty Lancy.
Aye.
Trusty Abalito.
Aye.
Mayor Cahill. Trusty Byer.
I can't even tell you how many times I go home and my son's like, damn, look at those clips.